Secretary Sloan? All right, we reconvene the meeting at 8:51 PM. Item G1, I think, right now?
Thank you. Item G1 is to adopt Resolution 18/19-43 and authorize the General Manager to sign a lease agreement with Echo Site for a cell tower easement on Villages of Zinfandel, Unit 3C. And for this item, at the dais, the board has received printed public comment and a site map. And I'll turn it over to Finance Manager Matt Goodell.
All right, good evening. Chair Yearwood, Board Members, Matt Goodell, Finance Manager. So tonight, we have an item about a new cell tower, potentially. And in July 2018 of last year, the Planning Department and my department Finance was approached by a communications company, Echo Site, to propose a location on or near one of our parks in the Villages of Zinfandel area. Echo Site is a network solutions company that offers a single-point access build-to-site towers. And after having multiple meetings onsite at Tuscany Park and around Corvina and Zinfandel Drive, as you've seen in that map, a proposed site was determined to be the least obtrusive while still accomplishing their needs for cell coverage. The map is attached, and also you see some satellite images to view. The footprint would be about a 40-foot-by-40-foot area, and that includes the tower, the mechanical building enclosed by a fenced compound. The tower would be in a tree-like look, and the easement will allow access to construct, install, operate, and maintain that compound. In exchange for the easement, the district would receive a starting monthly rent consideration of $2,000 with a 1.5% escalator over an initial term of 10 years. And then there are four additional five-year terms for a potential of 30 years. District Legal Counsel has reviewed the lease agreement, and Echo Site has been notified that there is a city permit process as well. So we're just allowing the easement of the property. The company will have to go to the, get unconditional permits from the city to move forward on building that tower. I'm available for questions, as well as representation from the company. Echo Site is here with us tonight in the audience, too, that can also assist if need be. That's my presentation.
All right, thank you. And we don't have any public comment cards or anything on that? Okay, just want to make sure. All right. Any comments? Director Reyes, we'll start with you, or... Sure, Director Lineback, how about we...
I just have, well, I have one question, which is, has there been any outreach to the community? Are they aware that this is being considered in their neighborhood? And then, honestly, couldn't they make those trees look more real? They stand out in a forest, and you can tell that they're a cellphone tower.
I would almost argue why not just make it a cellphone?
So the starting of the process, no, so the community has not been outreach. Right now, they have to get approval that a landowner would allow access to that space, and then those efforts are done, again, through the public hearings, through the permit process with the city that the company would do. And here we have Echo Site representative right here.
Hi there, Board Members. My name is Ross Milletich. I am a zoning manager with Echo Site regarding this particular project. Thank you for having us here this evening. I also have my radio frequency engineer, Jerry Smith, in the back to answer any radio frequency specific questions, if you have them. And I'd just like to speak to the two questions that you just raised, Board Member Lineback. The first is that, as your Finance Manager, Mr. Goodell, said, we have not yet made outreach to the community, but we are planning on doing so as part of our due diligence, once we get the actual zoning process underway. Echo Site's policy is to sign a lease with the underlying landlord, in this case, that would be the Parks District, prior to proceeding with submitting to permitting, just in case, you know, anything should go awry. We don't have one or the other side affected by that process. And in terms of the actual appearance of the trees, I would not let these, let me underscore this, extremely preliminary drawings that we have in this particular site plan give you a sense of what we plan on actually putting out onto the Parks District's property. You may have seen some of the newer sites that have gone up in the last couple of years, and they look significantly different from the older sites, and in my opinion, look quite better. So it's part of the general requirements, particularly from jurisdictions, that we make these trees look as realistic as possible, and we plan on continuing that same policy.
Secretary Sloan?
Sure. I guess you guys viewed a number of spots. I heard that at least four different ones, that you were suggesting the Parks District wasn't happy with three of them, and this is the one that was, I don't know how the word obstru-, obstruct, obstrusive, but this is, to me, this is the most unobstrusive place I could think of, because I drive down that, that street to go to the soccer, and that's, you've got nothing around there. It's kind of an open field, there's no trees there, and you're going to put this Christmas, a fake Christmas tree, 40 feet high, right there, right there in the middle, where everybody can see it. And to me, I just, I'm just not happy with that solution, so that's my opinion.
I understand, Secretary Sloan, and I was not present for this particular site walk, so I can't speak specifically to how that site was chosen. My understanding is that the particular location was chosen between, you know, the various parties over at Echo Site and members of the Parks District as well, specifically in a way that would not interfere with ongoing Parks operations. And Park staff may be able to speak a bit more to that in terms of how this site was selected.
Yeah, we had a team of Planning Department, Finance, General Manager, Larkin, too. Well, we toured the spots that they were proposing, and they're actually, they're closer to homes, and over by Tuscany Park was the original spot. And so we took a look down the road, down Corvina, by the little park there that we have across from Stone Creek and Zinfandel Drive, and saw that it had a swale, it had a ditch going through, and it does have trees, it does have encompassing trees around that piece. And so that, that little plot right there, that, right, doesn't impact parkland, because it doesn't impact the turf. It's kind of offset within amongst those trees, that it made sense. And we would only put Christmas lights on at Christmas time. So that's why we thought that was the right spot next to the, to the ditch.
And that could be our holiday Christmas tree lighting, right there.
There you have it, sponsored by T-Mobile.
Which might be an idea. We do that Village Green Park, have constructed there, and every year, it's, use the same tree.
All right.
Did you ever think of that?
Are you, any other comments, Secretary Sloan? Director Reyes, did you have anything?
No.
Okay.
The thought of how it was chosen, and where. And I don't see any...
Drawing of, of the tree, to be...
Yeah, there's options to choose, and they're going to pick the most...
Oh, 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 okay.
...appropriate, that, that mirrors the other trees that are nearby.
Question, so in Linda Budgge's, Councilmember Budgge's letter, she says, "We're going to be removing trees to fit this one in?" Is that true?
So again, because this is very preliminary, and not having taken a full construction survey of the site yet, it's entirely possible that trees will need to be removed in order to actually construct the site. But it's Echo Site and T-Mobile's both policies, to replace any trees that do have to be removed with other trees of similar maturity and size. So there would be a net zero loss of tree cover on this site, is my understanding of how this process would go.
All right. Nothing, I'm sure. All right. So it'll be roughly 40 feet tall, is that correct, the tower?
Yeah, and there's, there's limitations on how tall the tower can be. I mean, I think, I imagine they'd want it to be 100 feet, but with aviation rules and things that are, that are in place there. I think they are limited to whatever the specs are in that, that picture, that how tall it's going to be.
All right, I just wanted, because I drove by that spot today, and there's, thank goodness there's trees there that are already pretty tall.
Right.
So after that, I was kind of worried those, some of those might get chopped down, because I'm thinking, it actually could be tucked back there, where you might not even really see it. And honestly, when you're driving down that street, you're not going to be looking over going, "Oh, look at that fake Christmas tree." But, I don't know, maybe. So, I don't know. After, I mean, I think they're just the regular cell towers are better than the trees, myself, but that's just me. But, but it was nice to see this map, because it was hard to visualize where it was at. I had reached out to the General Manager to say, "I can't figure out where this is going to land," so. But where it's, where it's at, I mean, I know that area, I live over there, so. What'd you say? Prefer 65 feet. Ooh. So, no, the good news is I don't go that far down south, usually. And I don't have kids playing soccer anymore.
And Chair Yearwood, I would also like to underscore that because these drawings are very preliminary, the exact height and even design of the tree, so whether that be a pine or eucalyptus or some other sort of tree, is all dependent on our negotiation with the Planning Department. So it need not necessarily be as tall as it is in the preliminary drawings, but that would be the most optimal height for a radio frequency engineer. So of course, in the spirit of good negotiation, we'd like to ask first, and then, you know, negotiate downward as needed.
And this, this tower is designed to basically increase the capacity of that Stone Creek neighborhood, is that correct?
That's correct. Jerry, if you would like to speak a bit more to this, you're certainly welcome, too.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I mean, looking at your map, that's what it says. I just wanted to make sure I was...
Yes, that's correct. It's designed to increase capacity, not coverage.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, I'm sorry, coverage, yeah. I see the map turn darker green in that area, so. Well, I do have T-Mobile, no. I have terrible reception out in Anatolia, but that's another story. I think everybody does, actually. Only thing I would say is maybe if we have these things in the future, it would be nice to get like a, and I know we don't know specifically heights and things, like a streetscape view of what it would look like there, because that's what I was trying to visualize. What's this 40-by-40 wall thing going to look like with the beautiful artificial tree there?
Right. They could go out and take a photograph of the existing terrain, and then they could superimpose this object in there to scale, and then we can make a better, you know, decision here, I think.
Yeah. That would just be something for future things. I know we, I'm not going to hold this up, because I don't, so. I know where it's at, I can, I can get a, you know, a sense of where it's going to be and all that, so.
Well, that's, that's going to be out of our hands, anyway, because that's the city permitting, right, what they're going to require.
Yeah, we're the first hoop, and they obviously have other hoops that they have to jump through to, to get this done. We're just allowing the easement and allowance that this location would work, and they just have to follow whatever those regulations and parameters are set by the city.
So we're just basically saying we are...
We're being landlords.
We'll be your landlords.
Yep.
That's correct.
All right.
And cell towers are good tenants, just for the record.
I hear they hardly make any noise. All right, well, if, well, that is it. Anybody care to make a motion?
I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 18/19-43 and authorize the General Manager to sign a lease agreement with the Echo Site for a cell tower easement on Villages of Zinfandel, Unit 3C. And I shall not repeat the APN number.
All right, a motion by Director Lineback, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Reyes, roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan? Vice Chair Danzel?
No.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Much obliged.
Item G2 is to accept the independent auditor's report and financial statements for fiscal year 2017-18, as will be presented. And I'll turn it back over to Manager Goodell.
All right, so tonight, staff is bringing the 2017-18 financial statements and the audit for board acceptance. March 26, 2019, the Budget and Finance Committee met to discuss the draft statements. There was brief discussion, and no major changes were made to the final version that is going to be presented here tonight. Biggest highlights that I'm proud of are no audit findings, the amount of awards and recognition that took place, and a positive trending reserve balances, especially in the general fund, not to the level that they need to be, but returning in the right direction. And so that's, that's positive. This year, the district continued with the services of JJACPA, and tonight, we have Joe Arch here representing the firm, and a brief presentation, and available for any of your questions. I'm sorry you had to wait so long, Joe.
Thanks, Matt. Well, I'm basically here just for questions tonight. Since we didn't have any findings, our standard report is unmodified, no changes. Our communications letter doesn't have any findings in it, and just standard information from the financial statements, so no major changes in format or, or presentation. So, so, like, like I said, I'm just here for questions. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions?
No, we went through.
All right.
It's, it's a, it's a good report. It's good news, no findings. So I'll move.
All right.
I'll move that the Board of Directors accept the independent auditor's report and financial statements for fiscal year 2017-18, as presented.
Motion by Director Reyes, second by Vice Chair Danzel, roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe.
Item G4?
Item G4 is to authorize the General Manager to execute the necessary documents to renew the Employee Health, Dental, Life, Vision Employee Assistance Program, EAP, and Long-Term Disability Plans, effective July 1, 2019. And I'll turn it over to Human Resource Manager, Andrea White.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Yearwood and Board of Directors. I'm bringing forth tonight the renewal of all of our benefit programs that we offer the full-time employees of the district. Our, my first staff report is to renew our plans, our medical plans, and as an overview, we're asking to not make any changes to our current offerings for staff. Right now, you can see in the graphs that there are very few changes to the actual plans. The carrier makes changes that we have no control over, and they're just slight changes to a co-pay or a deductible or an out-of-pocket max. But overall, what I think is important is that the fiscal impact is minimal this year. At an overall, it is a 4.1% increase. Now, the numbers that have been stated in the fiscal impact, the additional $2,292 per month, that's with the current level staff right now. We do have several vacancies. Of course, that's going to increase when we add additional full-time staff to the district. There is, you can see that they kind of vary on the increases from plans. Again, it's not because of our current members and any medical issues with our current members. It has to do with overall numbers that are out of our control. So we did want to also, I want to mention that Sutter was added. That's something we brought forth to the Board last year. We did not quite have enough members to elect it that they wanted, but they signed us up anyway. And those who have Sutter have stated that they're very pleased to use that service, and it's still comparable, even though the percentage went up a little bit higher than the others. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions?
I, I don't have any questions about the benefit plans specifically, and maybe this is even a question for Matt. So when you budget, do you include the vacant positions in your budgeting? Just what, the numbers we have in front of us here are just this year's actuals?
That's correct. We absolutely do. We take an average, and I think we maybe even add a little bit more to that, just in case, because every employee costs a little bit differently. But we do take an average of the cost and add that to the budget. That's part of the cost for employees.
All right, any other questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
I move the Board of Directors authorize the General Manager to execute the necessary documents to renew the Employee Health, Dental, Life, Vision, Employee Assistance Program and Long-Term Disability Plans, effective July 1, 2019.
Oh, motion by Director Lineback?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Danzel, roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
All right, item G5?
Thank you. Item G5 is to authorize the General Manager to allow an annual deposit of $1,500 for a single employee and $3,000 for employee plus spouse, child, family, into a health savings account, HSA, for employees that select a high deductible health plan effective July 1, 2019.
Okay, so this is a separate motion, because this is asking the district to contribute to employees' health savings accounts. We've been doing this since, I think, oh, for a long time, I'm trying to see, 2013, we've been contributing to those people who select a high deductible plan, which is a cheaper plan and premiums for the district. I do want to state that there are some corrections to this analysis. We barely get our health benefit quotes in time to put it in this packet. So these deductibles are slightly off, so you'll have to look at the actual, the benefit program to get the correct deductible amounts. For example, the out-of-pocket max for Western Health Advantage is actually $4,000 to $8,000, not $6,700 to 35, or $13,500. The Kaiser deductible for family is $5,000, and the Sutter Health Plus for family is $4,400. Like I said, in our benefit program, those deductibles are correct. But regardless, those, or irregardless, those plans, the deductibles and the out-of-pocket max consistently increase every year. And by contributing to this health savings account, it helps people meet those deductibles. In addition, the premiums are considerably less. As you see in the fiscal impact, it costs us $51,000 a year to put those contributions towards employees. But if they had selected a co-pay plan, it would have cost us $71,000. So there's still savings that we're receiving by offering the plan, and 20 out of 39 employees right now choose this type of plan. They really like it. It works for them, and it works for their families, so we'd like to continue with the same amount. If you have any questions, let me know.
Director Lineback?
When is the last time, or has there ever been a time where the district contribution was increased because of the increase in the deductibles, in the high deductible plans?
That's a good question. There has not been a change to the contribution by the district. Employees can also contribute their own money into this plan, and at this time, for the most part, everyone is stating that they're happy with this, with this contribution by the district. It still meets many people's needs. You could see deductible for a single person is $2,000, and we're, we're committing $1,500 of that. And it rolls over every year. This money doesn't, it's not a use it or lose it. And so some people who have this account, they've had it for many years, or a few years at least, and they are using it because those funds are rolling over, and they're able to use it for dental, vision, deductibles, and so forth. So we haven't had any requests to increase that amount. And something that I think I stated in the previous staff report, I'd love to do a salary and benefit analysis, and at that time, really look at whether or not we'd like to make some major changes.
All right. Any other questions? See, none. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Okay. I move that we authorize the General Manager to allow an annual deposit of $1,500 for a single employee and $3,000 for employee plus spouse, child, family, in a health savings account, HSA, for employees that select a high deductible health plan, effective July 1, 2019.
Motion by Director Reyes, second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Danzel, roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
All right, G6?
Item G6 is to authorize the General Manager to execute the necessary documents to renew the Flexible Spending Account, FSA, with Total Administrative Services Corporation, for eligible employees, effective July 1, 2019.
Okay, so this is a, a pretty new offering that we have brought to the district. It started in 2016. We've noticed that there's increasing costs for out-of-pocket expenses for medical, and it can also be used for childcare or dependent care. Doesn't have to be children, any dependent care that's eligible. And it started off with a few members, and now we have, let's see here, over half of the employees who are eligible are using the FSA. As you may remember, the FSA is where you put money into a flexible spending account, and it is kind of a use it or lose it, except we allow $500 to be rolled over into the next fiscal year. And we provide information to staff, saying, "This is how much you have." You know, "We want everyone to use all the money that they put into this account." It costs the district $1,016. However, it reduces the taxable wages, and we also have a cost savings in the, in our taxes that we pay towards these employees. And people really do use it. And for the tune of quite a bit of money, we had employees put in over $20,000 into their accounts, and they really like this offering. The rates for this plan, or for the administration of this, because it's all employee contributions, the rates have not gone up from last year, so the same rates as last year. So let me know if you have any questions.
So actually, I just did a little quick calculation, folks. And the program, from the district's perspective, pays for itself in tax savings. So even though the district has to pay those fees, the money you save on taxes covers that. So it's a pretty good deal all around.
All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Directors authorize the General Manager to execute the necessary documents to renew the Flexible Spending Account, FSA, with Total Administrative Services Corporation, TASC, for eligible employees, effective July 1, 2019.
Motion by Vice Chair Danzel?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Secretary Sloan, roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrea. All right, moving on to Board of Directors items.
Thank you. Item H1 is Board Member Reports. Item A is Training Regarding the Annual Board Retreat on April 3, and all directors attended.
All right. Director Reyes, would you like to start?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair, Chair Yearwood. On March 21, I attended an, the annual general meeting of the California... of the California Associations of Park-
We're talking about our board retreat, right?
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Our board retreat, really enjoyed it. It was focused. I thought it was, I felt, you know, very, very good about our team. I thought the team was able to express, you know, their, their vision or whatever we were discussing. We were able to express it kind of really in a good, in a good way, and understanding, allowing each other to just be forthright and understanding it. So I thought that was a very good workshop that we had. I did enjoy my dinner, too.
Director Lineback?
Yeah, just briefly, I thought it was interesting that we have a range of leadership styles and that ultimately, I think, they complement each other because I think we have a very effective board here. So it was, it was good to get that understanding about each other and I thought it was informative and enjoyable. And it, and the word team, I think, is an important word because we have to operate as a team, so.
All right. Secretary Sloan?
I agree with both my fellow directors here. I sort of like to, I wish it was longer for some reason, or we had more time to really dive into what we're doing. Because once we got to that certain point, we just sort of like ran out of time, I felt like. And I just think that there's a, we, like, we did that one scenario on, was it on the pool? That, that whole focusing on how do you focus? And I thought that was really interesting, and then, and I'd like to continue that type of scenario on different things so we could work as a team. I mean, because that was, it was relaxing, where I don't have pressure of anybody, you know, around us. It was just, it was nicely done. And so, like I said, it just seemed like it was so short, an hour long or something, you know? Hour and a half. Then we had dinner. It was a good dinner. There was no sand in my clam.
I was wondering if you were going to bring that up. All right. Vice Chair Danzel?
General Manager Larkin always has some test he likes to give us. Every year he's been here, he gives us some tests. So I always wonder what next year's is going to bring. Not that they're bad tests, but it definitely makes us look inside ourselves a little bit more and, and see what's going on and how the five of us can work together to, to be a more cohesive board. I think we do quite well, but there's always, you know, places that we can improve and how we need to look at our community differently. Not that we're looking at them in a bad way or a good way, but just there's always ways to reach out and look at, look at our community and ourselves. And I think that's, we all got into this position one way or another, but it helps us, you know, think why we're doing this. And so I unfortunately can't wait until I find out what next year's test is going to be.
All right. I agree with all my fellow board members. Perhaps he could come up with a longer test to satisfy Secretary Sloan?
More questions.
Yes, more questions, yeah, so. I, yes, you know, it's always nice to get together and find out things about each other so we can work better, better together as a board. So last year was very interesting. This year was very interesting. So I would agree, it's always good to get together so we can learn more about each other. Because we usually tend to only get together during, well, per the Brown Act, only get together during board meetings and such, though. But yes, it was, it was a good time, and I didn't have any sand in my food either, which is good because I didn't, I had a steak, so. All right, that's all we got. Did you, are we good in that regard? All right, we'll move on to Item B. Board Member Community Activities. So can I just continue on? Okay. Director Reyes?
So on March 21, that was a very busy day. The California Association of Park and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members, which I am representative of our park district, they had the CPRS conference down at Cal, no, down at the Convention Center. They had an annual general meeting, which I attended via the telephone conference. And boy, do they keep you there. Inez, are you there? I am, I am. And so we pretty, and then from there, we moved into the Executive Board Meeting. So it started off at 10:00 in the morning, and the Executive Board Meeting was going on from 1:30 to 2:30 or 3:00, and we just kept going. So anyway, that was interesting. It's, it's a nice opportunity for me to learn more about this board. And at this time, they're looking to fill, I guess, executive committee positions. I think there might be one opening. The other thing was, it culminated with the Awards Banquet, in which we were there to accept, together with staff, to accept an award. Two, actually, right? There were two awards that we were, we were, we had received. And it was, it was really good. I, and again, as I say, we need to put our awards out there. And I think it, it would be a good idea to have it mentioned somewhere in the parks. You know, whether it's on the, on the marquee or whatever, the sign that, you know, awarded this, this design and all that. Because this way, we don't forget. So that's one of the things I think would be nice. The other thing was, we did have the board tour of the Cordova Golf Course. It was very, very eye-opening, and it was very interesting. And, you know, I, I know that Arnold, is his name, Arnold Billingsley or whatever. And I had a conversation. He can understand the fact that, you know, it's one thing to see what you see outside. It's another thing to see what we need to do to take care of the infrastructure. I appreciate your support there, Director Yearwood, because it was really, I think, we need to find a way for them to be able to keep the operations going at the same time, the money to attend to some of these infrastructures that need to be done. That's it. Thank you. Oh, and the tacos were good at the, at the concession area.
All right. Director Lineback?
Yes, I attended the Annual Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon at the Neil Orchard Senior Center. I actually go to that event every year. I really like that. I like that they recognize each other and that they are the ones that keep that center going. You know, obviously, the staff is doing a great job, but it would need far more employees if it weren't for the volunteers stepping up. So, and it was nice to see that the city recognized them and Don Natoli's office and Ken Cooley's office, so that was great.
All right. Secretary Sloan?
Is there a fast way to say CAP or CBM? Is it, they don't go like, Seppsum? Pepsa Kibum? Well, I attended the Awards Banquet, and I was proud to see my Inez Director up there and being part of that, that board. It's, it opens, it just makes us look like, just, not look like. It definitely gives us more power, I think, because of our district, the strength. You know, I'm on CARPD, she's on that board. And hopefully, there's, you know, there could be further openings for other directors to, to step out. And hopefully, Patrick gets elected to the, where, what was that?
CSDA.
CSDA, that would be fantastic. I think that would really be great. I went, attended on March 27, the CARPD, had our board meeting. It was a week later because of something that was going on. Was it Ledgestage or something? What was it? Something was going on. They decided not to have it. But we had it a week later, and, you know, the, the conference is ready for Thursday, May 23. I, I think we're all maybe going, maybe not. Mike, are you going to?
I'm going.
Oh, you're not going? Well, it's going to be a really nice, like it always is. It's going to be a large focus on natural disasters after the Paradise Fire and the one down in LA. So that's going to be a main focus. We're doing a couple of different things differently and making the, the sponsors' reception and more of like a sit-down dinner type thing, buffet. But, so it's, it's, it's going to be nice. Hopefully, the weather's going to be nice, too. The, I went to the special meeting for the board on the, for the golf course, and yes, it was. You know, it was definitely eye-opening and loud with these, with the sound of peacocks screaming at us. What are you doing in my house? Get out of here, you know? That's what it sounded like to me. So there was a lot of, it was a mess, and it definitely needs to be cleaned up. And the work area needs to be addressed, definitely. On April 9, I attended the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association Meeting. Basically, we're going all over the, the allotted funds that were given to the various organizations and field renovation projects and, and the, how Rod Borba's softball league is, is all mixed up. It's everywhere this, this year. It's like there, there's games being played even down at Heron Landing Park. There's, yeah, there's games at the Cordova High School. There's games at Mills. There's games over at, at Cordova Gardens. It's like, it's, and all preparing for next year's grand opening of that facility, which is going to be fabulous. We also, at the RCA meeting, we talked about the future possible, the track and field club could be really big. I really feel it's an untapped resource. A lot of kids don't really have a chance until, till junior high to get into a track and field. And I think they do come to the sixth graders and try to get them into running or something. But this would be a club that would be from kindergarten through 12th grade. And I, I, it's got big potential. I mean, just to be able to put a shot put in an eight-years-old hand, you know? What do you do with this? You just throw it. Oh, that's all you do? Who knows? That kid could become an Olympian, right? Just because he touched it at an early age. Or we put a golf club in their hands, right? Get him, get him to swing those clubs right away. We also talked about that basketball league, which is really taking off. It's really doing well. I'm really proud of the district of organizing that. It's at four different elementary schools, I believe. And, because that's the only, I think there's only that many schools that can have actually a gymnasium and they can have a basketball game. But that youth league is really, really big. And they play on Saturdays from 9:00 to noon. If you ever get a chance, go check it out. I might go out and take some photographs. But a follow-up on Inez, on the award through Gun. I, I really think it's important that, that we take the reins on getting that information to the grapevine or the papers or something, just get something printed. I saw a picture of the one thing we got for the par, park horse that we had you guys on the cover, right? Of the grapevine, wasn't it? Right. Yeah, that was big. That was big. I mean, that's, I like those kind of things, you know? Was it the cover?
Yes.
Yeah. You were in it, Mike. Forget? Didn't you cut it out and put it in your scrapbook? Okay, I'll move on. Tomorrow night, the art opening here at City Hall from 5:30 to 7:30. I hope you all can attend. It's a reception. It's a nice show. I have a piece in there. It's got our mayor and his wife in it. I want you all to see it. The Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon was really fun. I enjoyed it. Well done. Heather always does a great job. The theme was fantastic, superheroes. And I was just waiting for Patrick to put on his super cape and-
It's always on.
And, oh, it's always on. Okay. And then I, last but not least, I attended the Breka Annual Easter Egg Hunt on April 13, and it was nicely attended. I think there was about 100 people there. There was probably 70 kids or so. Don't you think? Andrea, I think it was nicely attended. Beautiful day. The park did a great job on not cutting the grass too short, so the eggs were a little bit harder to find. And, and I really appreciated the district stepping up with some of the prizes. Right. For the golden eggs. Or did Breka do all that? All Breka? No, no? Well, we did have a table out there with some rec guides, correct? Yeah. So we were promoting our park, too, so. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing, Vice Chair?
The only thing I have is that I will be attending Copenhagen this weekend.
All right.
Nothing in the past. I'm looking forward.
You're in the future. We're moving-
Looking forward. Isn't that what we're all supposed to look forward?
Copenhagen.
All right. All right. I, too, I, too, attended that very long acronym Awards Banquet on March 21. It was very nice, again, to, for the district to be recognized for two of our facilities, two of our parks. The entertainment was fabulous, just wonderful. I don't know if the cat ever came back, but-
The very next day.
He probably did the very next day or something like that, but I, too, also attended the special meeting where we did the tour of the Cordova Golf Course. It was very eye-opening. Again, you see the course looks pretty darn good. It's when you look behind things and go through gates that you see there's definitely some work to be done out there, so. It was very, very eye-opening. I almost think maybe we need to consider doing things like that more on a regular basis, where we're just touring facilities just to look at them, not when there's something pending with the board. So, all right, that is all I have. So I guess we're going to I. Comments by staff on non agenda items?
Thank you. Item I1 is the District-wide Monthly Progress Report for April, and I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Thank you. And not Clerk Goodell? I don't know where, I was like looking him at. Anyway. Just some updates. Annual Form 700, early filer for the district was successful. We met the April 2 deadline and achieving full compliance. So thank you to all the board members and the staff for doing that. Well done. Thank you. Partnership events. Clerk Jones, Hagan Community Center staff and the management team representatives assisted the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce by hosting the Recreation Module for the Leadership Rancho Cordova class on April 11. I am a member of that class, and they did a fantastic job. They presented information about the district. We took a tour. They loved the barn and the new pigs. And then we did a project about park planning and what it takes to consider everyone's point of view and stakeholders and design something according to the best ability to meet everyone's needs. So it was a good, a good challenge for folks. In tennis court lighting system, we have a win. The coin machine at the Rosemont Community Park was no longer functioning. After a discussion with the Park Services staff, the amazing Jim Morales, management decided to change the mechanism to a more common push-button, no-charge system for the public. So our other lighting systems in our, in our tennis courts all had the push lighting. That was just a very old system. They were putting coins in, and then they would turn the knob, and then all of a sudden, the lights would come on. And so we decided for equity's sake that we change them out to a consistent, no-pay lighting system with a push-button system. So thank you, Jim, for getting on that and making it a consistent practice throughout the district.
Patrick, is there any way of figuring out how many times they're used by the push-button method? Is that, is that a possibility?
I'm not sure it has a actual number attached to the system that we have on there. It's really a basic system where if someone is wanting to use the tennis court lights, you push the button, they turn on, and it's for a time period of maybe half an hour to an hour possibly.
That long?
And then they will automatically shut off based on, you know, if it's not re-pushed again, so.
Is that, is there a certain, like, is it past 10 o'clock you can still play?
No, it's timed out.
Timed out. You can't, no one can be out there.
Correct, yes. SETA, S-E-T-A Sacramento. Through a joint endeavor, Park Services worked with the Sacramento Employment and- Through a joint endeavor, Park Services worked with the Sacramento Employment and Training Agency, SETA, to provide job opportunities for three qualified individuals. At the end of their program, all three candidates were offered PMWA positions with the Park Services Department by practicing CRPD's General Employee Expectations and Standards. So we were able to turn that program around into a successful employment opportunity for folks. At Mather Sports Center, adult softball spring season is officially underway. Registration has increased from 48 teams in 2018 to 65 teams in 2019. At Heron Landing Community Park, five teams will be playing in our new women's softball league. Thank you, Jill. The Spring Junior Kings Youth Basketball League is up and running. We ended up with 94 players, 12 teams coached by 19 volunteers. All practices and games will be held at Mather Sports Center with games starting April 6th. Great accomplishment, again. So we're really moving forward with our sports programming here. And that concludes my highlights. There is a list of grants, updates, on page 124, and that concludes my report.
Any questions, or, all right.
When did the spray parks officially start opening? Is that not till?
Memorial Day weekend, we will start them. Hopefully, we'll have the UV system at the White Rock Splash Pad ready. We're still underway with, you know, the contractor that we have out there. Weather restrictions are really hampering our abilities to get some certain things done, but we're hoping that we're on the timeline to get that done according to the Memorial Day start date.
Was there an issue on the surface at Heron Landing?
No.
No?
There was originally, there was a slip factor that we, we had to go in and resurface it before we reopened the splash pad at the beginning of last season.
Okay. Good.
All right. Item J?
Just real quickly, before we move on, on the board invitation page, I just wanted to note that there's been a date change for the barn cleanup. It's now on Sunday, May 5th at 9:00 a.m.
Barn cleanup.
Instead of May 4th. So then, moving on to informational items, on J1, we have the Articles, Correspondence, and Public Outreach, and then J2 is your calendar.
All right. So I guess we're going to move on to Item K, closed session?
Thank you. Item K1 is Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9. Name of case, Kathy Spandola, case number 34-2015-00131058.
All right, so we'll adjourn to closed session at 9:43, I believe?